This is so people can watch it back, so we can post it on to our Facebook page, just so we've got a record of the event as well. But just so everyone knows, I am recording from this point. So once again, yeah, good evening. Thank you all so much for coming. Tonight, we'll be hearing from three candidates. Elaine Haney, Tracey Delphia, who are both running for the candidates for the three-year select board seat. And Dawn Hill Fleury, do I say that right, Dawn? I've got that right. Unfortunately, her opponent Mark Nadal is unable to make it this evening. So we will be, we'll be shortening the one-year seat section, but we will be hearing a little bit from Dawn, just so we can hear what she has to say about her candidacy. Before we get started, I wanted to go over a few of the rules to this forum. Each candidate will get up to three minutes for an opening statement. Following the opening statement, candidates will be asked the same questions with up to two minutes to answer for each question. The candidate answers the question last, we'll answer the question first next time around. Candidates do get two rebuttals, each with one minute to answer. So you can use those rebuttals whenever, but you are allowed to for the entirety of the forum. The audience, oh, just gonna let someone in. The audience is, is gonna have an opportunity to ask questions during this part of the forum, when it is time for audience, audience questions. Could audience members indicate they have a question by either raising their virtual hand? And you should be able to see this down, down at the bottom, I think, believe it's. Yeah, I believe that there's an option down at the bottom to raise your hand. If you can't find that though, just indicate in the chat that you have a question. And I'll come to you in the order that I see them. It is just me on doing all the Zoom work this evening, so you might have to bear with me a little bit. We all know how Zoom meetings sometimes go. So the Dawn's section will, was originally going to be about 25 minutes, but it'll probably just continue talk for about maybe five or 10. But the three-year candidacy will get 35 minutes, but as we've got a little bit more time now, we might just go a little bit over. We do plan on finishing this though by about 6:45. Alright, so just so everyone knows, when you are answering this question, I will put up this sign to indicate you have 30 seconds left. And this sign right here to indicate that you have run out of time. And once you do see this, if you could wrap up ASAP, that'd be great. I really don't want to end up having to turn people's microphones off in this. That's not really how I want to play with this, but obviously if you keep going, I'm gonna have to do that. Okay, so let's kick this off. We'll begin with the, the one candidate for the one-year seat, Dawn Hill Fleury. Dawn, would you like to kick us off with your opening statement?
Well, my name is Dawn Hill Fleury and I'm running for the one-year seat to fulfill a commitment that I made when they interviewed me to fill in for this past year. They asked during the interview if I would agree to run for the last year of the term, and I agreed to run. And that's why I'm running. One, and two, we've started this merger business and I'd like to see it through to the end. I'm a I've been in Essex since 1959 here in the town. And I've been through a lot of this and I, I'd like to see it come to a conclusion. Thanks.
Wow, very much under two minutes there, Dawn. Well, three minutes, I think. Excellent. Well, I'm gonna ask you a few questions and then we can open up the audience. So in terms of housing policy, in what way would you change housing policy in Essex to attract a broader cross-section of the Vermont populace?
I think we need more affordable housing here in Essex. What we've labeled affordable housing is not really. When you're having to pay $1,200 for a one-bedroom apartment, that's not affordable to me. I think we need to, as we reach out and more realtors look to build, we need to make sure we guarantee that the apartments are affordable for people. And we need to advertise that fact.
Okay, thank you so much for that answer. So you mentioned that you would really like to see the merger through. To you, what is the problem, what is the problem this merger is trying to solve? And how does it solve that problem?
I'm not sure it was a problem to start with. What it does is take two communities and merge them into one, so that they become one family, one group working to the same goal. Unfortunately, I just, I don't think we're quite there as far as a complete merger yet. I have no opposition to merger and merging everything together, but that's what I want to see, is that everything is put together before we vote. And that's why I've said no all along, because to me, a merger is a complete joining of everything, which would mean the libraries, the fire department, the rec departments, and whatever else is left to join together, that it needs to all be aligned so that it can work efficiently and cost efficiently for people. I just want us to be one, one group, and not one group doing one thing and one group doing something else. That's, you know, basically like to see, I think in the end, it would be a good thing to be one giant community helping their neighbors, but I don't think we're quite there yet.
Thank you for your input there. So COVID is obviously, we're, we're a year in. And it creates more problems all the time. And how do you propose to lower the threat of transmission in Essex? And do you believe that Essex has done a good job at dealing with COVID so far?
I think they've done a very good job. I would keep encouraging people to wear their masks, to socially distance, to follow the CDC guidelines. I know that the schools and the town has done an outstanding job as far as COVID outreach. Annie Cooper's doing all she can in Essex to push double masks now, so I guess we're in the right direction. If Annie says we're good, we're good. But no, truthfully, I think as far as, you know, reaching out, we've done a good job. I wish we could do more for our small businesses and more for our food shelves, because the, the need for, at the food shelves has grown so much. I wish there was more we could do. I know there is grant money, so I've encouraged, you know, the, the local food shelves to apply for that grant money to help them, because there's, we still have a long ways to go with COVID.
One big issue that has been obviously an issue for decades, for decades, but has definitely been more prominent in the last six months is policing in Essex. The police budget comprises more than 30% of the town's budget. Do you agree this proportion of spending? Why or why not?
I agree with your budget, but I wish they had built more outreach into their budget. More mental health, help into their budget, excuse me. I have a kitten that doesn't want to be left alone here. I, I think they're, they're trying, but I think we need to do a lot more training, both with the police department and with our community as far as racial justice goes, as far as, you know, equality and policing goes, I guess. I'm not sure if that's the right term. I do think that the chief is open to try. But I do believe there's a lot more work to be done there, and I would love to have seen like a permanent mental health worker added to his staff through his budget, but maybe we can work on that for the next year. As we continue this training, this, this joint training that we're doing.
And my final question for me, and so just to give an indication to the audience, if you do have questions, please indicate in the chat or put your hand up, and I will come to you in the order that I see them. But the final question from me is obviously climate change, it, it needs to be dealt with, not just on a global and federal level, but also on a local level. What environment, what changes do you feel that the select board can make to, to better protect the environment?
We've encouraged using more electric vehicles. I know the police department is looking at it and the town public works are looking at it. Unfortunately, the heavy equipment, we can't do that, but we can cut down on emissions by using electric vehicles and if you kind of need to give somebody more of a, maybe a tax credit if you use an electric vehicle, I think that would be kind of a neat thing to do. More so than they already get. But encourage riding the bus, encourage parking your car and, or joining a carpool that would cut down on carbon emissions. But we've got to get the information out there. And we've got to make sure bus service is available to all those that would like it.
Well, thank you, Dawn. That's all the questions that I have for you this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to pose a question for Dawn? Well, there you have it, Dawn. Apparently, apparently you have comprehensively answered everyone's questions this evening, so.
I think most people here know me, have heard my speech anyway, so it worked with me, so. But I thank you for this opportunity to do this. I truly appreciate it and look forward to hearing the rest.
Oh, thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate it. And best of luck for March 2nd to you and your opponent.
I would like to, though, encourage everybody, if, when you return your ballot, please make sure you put your street address on your ballot, because there's a line there that just says address, and we really need people to, to put their street address on it. So thanks. Have a good night.
I don't think you're out of the woods just yet. I just noticed that Betsy has indicated that she's got her hand up, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Betsy to, for her question.
Oh, thank you very much. So Dawn, I have a question, something that I was thinking about this past week, and when they brought up the subject of the climate, would, you know, I, I live in the woods, I really only get about three hours of sun here. So putting solar on my house really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And, but would you be in support of having a solar array that people in Essex could buy into so that they could get some benefits from it?
I think that would be a wonderful idea, Betsy. I'm not sure where we would put it, though. I know there's already, already a giant one on Sand Hill Road, is that correct? Is my understanding?
On Sand Hill Road?
Because the town pays into something called Sand Hill Solar.
I don't know.
I've seen that on their warrants, that they paid into Sand Hill Solar. I'm assuming it's the one at the bottom of Sand Hill that sits up on the hill. But I am not sure of that. But I think I would encourage, you know, people that well, I'll look it up for you and I'll find out.
Thank you very much.
No, I think that's an awesome idea. I would encourage that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Betsy.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to make sure, does anyone else have a question for Dawn before we move on to the into, to the, to the other two candidates? Okay, going once, going twice. All right, okay. Well, thank you so much, Dawn. And thank you, Betsy, for the question. I do appreciate it. I guess we'll move on to the main event of the evening, where we'll be talking with Elaine Haney and Chelsea Delphia. And yeah, I just want to give a quick reminder of the rules real fast. Again, each candidate is going to get an opening statement. You get three minutes for this opening statement. I will use this, once you're at 30 seconds, I will use this when you're at time. Please wrap it up once you see that time as quickly as possible. You will get two minutes to answer questions that I have. Each candidate gets a, two rebuttals. And following, following my questions, we'll be opening up the audience for questions as well. We had scheduled to, to keep this meeting until 6:45. I'm happy to go a little bit over if need be. All right, well, first up, we have, I did have this written down. First up, we have Tracy.
There's my mute button. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and answer questions this evening. My name is Tracy Delphia. I was also an applicant to fill a vacancy this past June, as was Dawn. Although I was not appointed at that time, I also indicated that I was already planning to run for the select board seat, and now I'm following through on that commitment. I grew up in a small town where my father was a volunteer firefighter and a member of the town council. I've always held a firm belief in service above self, and I've always gone above and beyond to walk the walk in that capacity. I'm currently an elected justice of the peace and a clerk of the zoning board of adjustment for Essex. I'm also a nationally certified public sector manager, and I work for the state of Vermont as an IT manager. I have extensive experience finding efficiencies through process improvement and innovation. My commitment to transparency and my desire to increase public engagement and decision-making will benefit all of Essex as a whole now and into the future. I am also a collaborator by nature and always seek out the opinions, advice, and experience of others to learn more about all aspects of any given situation. Every single one of us, especially those serving the community, need to first recognize that the world is seen through many lenses, not just the ones we ourselves are wearing. I understand the importance of multi-directional communication. This cannot be understated, and I'm not afraid to say, I don't know, but I'll find out, and then actually put in the work to find out and get back to people with answers. Governance needs to start with listening to learn and understand before taking any action.
Thank you so much, Tracy, coming in well under the three minutes, so thank you. Elaine, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Tom. Hello, Tracy. Hello, everyone. And thank you, everyone, for taking the time to participate this evening. My commitment to Essex shows in my service. I moved here in 2000 so my kids could attend our excellent schools. I started giving back, serving as a library trustee, planning commissioner, village trustee, and now select board member. I represent Essex on the Chittingen County Regional Planning Commission and the Board of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I served on Town Meeting Television's board, helped start the Five Corners Farmer's Market, and was part of the Essex Governance Group. I know and understand our town, our residents, our neighborhoods, and how our government works. I am known for my forthright and honest opinions. You always know where I stand and why. I stand up for what I believe is right and for the best interests of the town and all its residents. I lean in to difficult conversations, work to solve problems, and act with integrity. I will always make the best decisions I can with the information, knowledge, and understanding that I have. I listen to residents and always weigh the needs of the entire town, not just part of it. I ask hard questions, I respect disagreement, and I work hard to compromise. As a select board member, I work every day to earn the respect of everyone I serve, recognizing that there is always room for me to improve. The future has so much potential for Essex. If reelected, I will continue working on pandemic recovery to support the health and safety of town staff and residents, as well as local businesses and families with childcare and food security needs. I will continue to encourage and support the work of justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion in our town. I will focus on streamlined capital planning to ensure equitable spending of capital dollars, to make capital budgeting more transparent, and to involve residents in the process. I will work to build stronger relationships between the town and local businesses. I will promote better information sharing on the town website, so residents can find what they need, including Essex Police Department webpages for more transparency about our policing practices. I will ensure that the financial health of the town and spending taxpayer dollars wisely is always a high priority. Our town requires capable leaders with strong backbones and a willingness to collaborate. With your vote, I promise to keep working hard for Essex and to help Essex meet its potential. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Elaine. And we'll be starting with you, Elaine, with our first question, and this is a question I asked Dawn as well. What is, what was the what was the problem that the merger is trying to solve, and how does it solve that problem?
Merger's trying to solve multiple issues. We are trying to balance the tax rate between the village and the town. I'm gonna take my glasses off, because there's a really big glare. Trying to balance the tax rate between the village and the town, so that everyone is paying the same amount for services equally. We are working to continue to eliminate duplication of services, and we're continuing to work to increase efficiency. We have already done a lot of consolidation, but at this point, we've gotten, we've gotten to the point where the easy stuff is done, and the next, the next logical step would be to merge, to achieve the additional efficiencies that we need. We've already saved 3, 3.4 million dollars in the last several years on consolidation. And so we think merger is the next logical step, so that we can continue those efficiencies and balance the cost of government services across the entire tax base.
Thank you, Elaine. And Tracy, the same question to you. What is the problem that merger is trying to solve, and is it solving it?
The problem that merger is trying to solve is that currently, I'm gonna break it down really, really simply. Currently, the town is made up of the town and the village. They all pay one tax rate. Members in the village also pay taxes to the village. Now, when services were formed, they were typically started in the village. When the town had a need for those services and departments, what should have happened was that the select board and trustees came together and worked collaboratively to find a solution. In my mind, that solution would have been to move that needed service into the town budget, so that it's funded equally. I don't have a time machine, so I can't go back and fix that problem. But as I see it, I, I have been involved in seeing many, many contracts and projects in the state that have failed because of a lack of detailed requirements, a lack of detailed deliverables, failure to mitigate any risk that may come up, and ramifications for things that don't happen. Primarily in contracts, we call those retainage. The current merger plan pushes consolidation of services down the road. I believe it's within the first five years. There are no details in a supplemental document or project plan to say how those services will be combined, what the change to services would be, what the potential change to staffing levels, and the costs associated that with that would be. For that reason, I don't think that the current proposal solves the underlying issue of untangling that spaghetti, so to speak, of, of how services and departments are funded.
Thank you, Tracy. And we're gonna start with you for this next question, which is on policing. What is your stance on alternative responses to restorative justice?
Restorative justice works. It is a viable solution to many issues encountered by our police. It needs to be combined with mental health supports. Currently, there is a contract with Mental, Howard Mental Health, excuse me, and First Call. I'd really like to look at that contract to see what metrics are being recorded. It's not about how much we're doing, but it's how well we're doing it. How are we meeting the needs of the community appropriately? And without the data to back that up, I can't answer that question. I think we need to have an open and honest conversation around whether that's meeting our community's needs or whether we need to supplement those services with our own social work, with our own mental health supports, right here in our own community. There are community conversations that are happening, and the feedback is there to drive the need as a priority. And I'm encouraged by Chief Hoag's upcoming virtual sessions to actually meet with the community and have these conversations. I think there's more work to be done. And I also feel that while we're talking about development, we also need to be talking about the impact to policing, to fire, to rescue services in order to support that development from a holistic point of view.
Thank you, Tracy and Elaine. Same, same question for you. What is your stance on alternative, what's your stance on alternative responses and restorative justice?
So I absolutely support our Community Justice Center, and we have been working with them closely on our Racial Equity Task Force. They are town employees, and we would like to, at some point, increase their ability to do their services without being impacted in terms of pay. There are, we are limited in how much we can spend on the Community Justice Center, because it is a State Department of Corrections line item budget, so, or grant. So we are trying to figure out ways that we can increase financial support for them within the town budget, as well as making sure that other towns whose services, community justice services we offer to them pay their fair share. So that's a very important aspect of the budget that will continue to be examined as we move along. We definitely have a great partnership with the Howard Center, and we have increased the funding for that line item every year for the last three years. And, but still, it's a very, very small part of the police budget, and I have in the past asked for more for that, and will continue to ask for more funding for that. And I also think that while in comparison to other towns in Chittingen County, we actually have a fairly low number of police in comparison based on per capita. But we are doing fine. We generally have vacancies in our police department, because it is difficult to find new officers, and then it takes a very long time to train them. But nonetheless, we are managing fine, and we are hopefully going to continue the conversation about how to manage our police budget, so that police are dealing with public safety and mental health experts are dealing with mental health and other crises of that nature. So thanks for the sign.
Thank you, Elaine. And we're gonna stay on the subject of policing for the moment. I'm just gonna let Betsy Dunn back in. So there is little ability for the public to hold Essex police accountable if need be with, with Chief Hoag really just reporting to the select board chair. How do you plan to address this issue, and do you see this a problem at all? And that, we're starting with you, Elaine. Thank you.
So when we started discussing this topic in the summer, we formed a Racial Equity Task Force pretty quickly. We hired a racial equity consultant facilitator, and we have built a committee of representatives of both the village trustees and the select board, the police department, the school district, and other members of the community. We held listening sessions with many people, including members of the BIPOC community, and we did some surveys of the community and got a fairly robust response. That group continues to work together, and we'll be presenting recommendations to the select board. So part of me wants to say that I really want to wait and hear what the community has to say about what they want to see in terms of how we should be relating to the police department and how residents can relate better to the police department. Captain Hoag, excuse me, Chief Hoag, former Captain Hoag, has been extremely responsive and is stepping up in a lot of great ways. I do think there's a lot more we can do. I think that transparency of information regarding police statistics is extremely important. I think our website is pretty lame in terms of what kind of data you can find about policing in Essex, and absolutely needs to be improved so that residents can learn more. I am not sure what the recommendations are going to be coming forward. I'm looking forward to receiving them, and I am absolutely open to pursuing a variety of what they have to say.
Thank you, Elaine and Tracy. Same question to you. There is little ability for the public to hold Essex police accountable. How do you plan to address this issue, and do you see?
The first step is just to create a space where we can have open and honest communication and give community feedback to Chief Hoag and the police department as a whole. I think that Chief Hoag's upcoming virtual sessions is a good step. I think that the racial equity conversations that are happening are a good step. I'm I, I think it should have happened sooner, and I think that folks should have had more ownership in that. and I think that folks should have had more ownership in that. I look at the traffic stop information from UVM as opposed to last year and now we haven't improved one bit. As I said before, it all comes back to the data. I would like to see what data exactly is being captured and have it presented in a very open and honest and transparent forum. One thing that I've done as, sort of switching hats here, as the IT manager for DOC for Corrections, is I put together an extract of all public data elements and those are posted to data.vermont.gov every single day. So any member of the public can go and download this data and compare it. It's everybody who's been under supervision since 2017. So anybody can go and access this data, do their own analyses. And it would be great to have the ability to look at the policing data, combine it with DOC data, do recidivistic studies and make all of these connections that are based on the data. So we have an informed decision.
Thank you, Tracy. And we're going to switch gears a little bit here and take a little look at local agriculture's business. Developers have received incentivizing tax breaks for new developments in the past and currently. Do you think agricultural operations should receive similar tax breaks, Tracy?
I do. There's so much opportunity here. My husband and I live on seven acres. We would love to be able to open up our land to have folks come in and, you know, use our land for their own small business in order to support their families. In keeping with expanded communities committees, excuse me, one of my desires in moving forward in the select board is to expand the committee structure. We have so much knowledge and expertise in our own community. We should be leveraging it. I would like to form a Sustainable Agriculture Committee with local landowners and current agricultural producers to find ways to further identify prime agricultural soils with landowners who are open to allowing their land to be used for that purpose. We should be incentivizing small agricultural businesses to remain in our community, to use the land that we have. I would also like to see expanded farmers markets, various days, times of the week, and also a bi-local campaign in general. It doesn't have to be limited to only agriculture. But the thing that we need to keep in mind is that when we incentivize development, when we incentivize anything, that revenue doesn't go away. It has to be supplemented by other community members. So we need to make sure that we are incentivizing what's important to our community and that isn't only limited to development.
Thank you, Tracy. Elaine, same question to you. Developers have received incentivizing tax breaks for new developments. Do you think agricultural operations should receive similar tax breaks?
I do. And there are similar tax breaks currently already available to agricultural properties through the state of Vermont and the Current Use Program. And the agricultural properties that exist in the village and the town already get to do that. In addition, we have some properties that when they come up for sale, the town is given right of first refusal as to whether to purchase it and keep it as open land or not. So that's not necessarily a financial benefit, but what it does for the town is allows us to consider parcels as they come up for sale and decide, how do we want to pursue that? Do we want to keep it as part of our open land? Or do we want to allow it to be developed? The town is very protective of open land outside of the sewer core and the town outside the village. And so whether that land is maintained as just open nature or it's maintained as parks or paths or it's maintained as farmland, there are no plans for extensive development in significant parcels of open land out in the town, in the area outside of the town sewer core. Within the town sewer core, businesses and developers that develop parcels of land do receive the opportunity to do tax stabilization if they're able to, if their businesses qualify for it. So I am more than happy to talk about ways that agricultural land can be further incentivized. I would want to involve the Planning Commission in that conversation because that is a very important aspect. They are much more knowledgeable about that than the select board and together we could make decisions on that.
Thank you, Elaine. What, Elaine, you'll start for the next question. What do you propose the Select Board to do to encourage affordable housing development in Essex?
So I was very excited last year that we finally managed to seat our brand-new Housing Commission, Joint Commission between the town and the village. And these planning commissioners are currently in the education and assessment phase. They are learning the ropes of the sector right now. And I am really looking forward to hearing what their recommendations are going to be to us. They're assessing what we need. We do know through Chittingen, through CCRPC, that Chittingen County needs 3,500 new affordable units in the next several years. And not all of them need to happen in Essex, but we do definitely need more single-family homes that are priced under $300,000 if possible. And the likely places for those are out in the town outside of the village where there are larger parcels of land available to develop those affordable houses. And I would love to see the Housing Commission come to us with a proposal for a revolving loan fund. South Burlington has one and it has resulted in some terrific housing options that have occurred in their new downtown centre. And I also want us, this is not something the Housing Commission needs to do, but we need to make people more available, aware of the rules of accessory apartments. People can add mother-in-law apartments or in-law apartments and rent them out. It lowers property tax burden, increases density and doesn't cost as much as building a new piece, a new building. So I think we have a lot of potential for growth with affordable housing in the community.
Thank you, Elaine. And Tracy, what do you propose the Select Board to do to encourage affordable housing development in Essex?
When I first moved to Essex, I was looking through the committees and I noticed that there was a focus on economic development, development in general. It seemed to be very business-focused. I was very surprised that there wasn't a Housing Commission already and I'm very glad that it was formed last summer. Elaine, I'm glad that you brought up South Burlington. While I served in South Burlington on the Planning Commission, I was involved with a great group of people who had an Affordable Housing Committee and who did that work to develop the recommendation to the Planning Commission for inclusionary zoning. We absolutely have a responsibility to residents to make housing not only available but affordable. I've shared that work that I helped in South Burlington with the Housing Commission in hopes that it will guide their work so that they can see what other communities are doing. And I'm very proud of that work in South Burlington. Again, the focus should not only be on development in the housing stock but on affordability. And we need to continue the work of the Housing Commission, give them what they need, work with the Planning Commission in order to codify this in our land development regulations.
Thank you, Tracy. And we're actually going to go back to the merger here because obviously there's a few questions about that people would like answered. How do you anticipate differing approaches to development evolving post-merger? And that question first goes to Tracy.
Well, that's another, it's basically an issue for the planning commissions. There are two. There's one in the village, there's one in the town. Depending on where that development occurs, those regulations will govern how that happens. I made this statement as a zoning board of adjustment member, again, only speaking as a private citizen right now, not on behalf of the ZBA. But it seems to me as though there should be an overall plan on the vision for that in the discussion with merger. It's another really big question that I have about what the goals are, what the strategy is to meet those goals post-merger. And those details aren't fleshed out. They're essentially just waiting for an answer if merger does pass.
And Elaine, same question to you. How do you anticipate differing approaches to development evolving post-merger?
So, as Tracy indicated, there are two different planning commissions at the moment, village and town. With the merger, the plan is to have a single planning commission and a single design review board. The reason for that is that would allow the planning commission of the new community to work on planning and developing a single vision for planning going into the future. And then the design review board would handle the applications. The current plan, according to merger, would be to take the comprehensive plan of the village and the comprehensive plan of the town and bring them together as a single comprehensive plan with two chapters. But the reason there is an additional converse, excuse me, additional detail about the future of planning is because that's a community conversation. We will not be putting anything in the charter that just says, this is how planning is going to happen going forward. We are setting up the structure of planning and we are setting up how people will be able to participate in the process. But the process needs to happen as a community. And so after merger, should it pass, the planning commission will be formed, the design review board will be formed, the business of the planning commissions will continue without interruption while we look to the future and have a conversation with our newly unified community on what we want our entire community to be. There already is also a town plan, ETC Next, and a village plan. Those don't need to differ much from what they are now, but we do need to have a communication as a community together about how we want our planning to go in the future.
Thank you, Elaine. And we're going to get back to racial justice issues in Essex. So as Elaine's already talked about this evening, you've spent so far around about $30,000, I'm not sure the exact number, on a series of listening sessions to address racial justice in Essex. If you win this seat, how do you plan on taking these conclusions? And what's your next action items to draw from these sessions, Elaine?
So we have spent around $30,000 so far and we've added additional money into the FY22 budget for continued facilitation and training. I want to see town employees and village employees receive training on racial equity, justice and inclusion throughout their employment with the municipality. It is not something that we should be checking the box on. It should be something that happens ongoing on a regular basis. We need to revise, examine and revise all of our policies related to HR, related to service delivery and everything else that the town does to make sure that everyone is receiving their services and everyone, the hiring practices are fair. And that is something that will take a long time and should be ongoing anyway. And finally, I think that we need to just make this topic an everyday part of everything we absolutely do. And one way to do that is to bring on a staff member whose focus is equity. And that person could also focus on human services. That person could also focus on communications. We need to do a much better job on all of those things. And going forward, that's my goal.
Thank you, Elaine. And Tracy, same question to you. So far, Essex has spent about $30,000 on a series of listening sessions to address racial justice in Essex. If you win this seat, how do you plan on taking on the conclusions drawn from in these sessions?
I'm, I have to admit that when these conversations started, I took a step back. I wanted to allow space for the BIPOC community to come together and safely express their desires and their wishes without, quite frankly, a middle-aged white woman sitting in the room, especially someone who would be running for a seat on the governing body. So I initially took that step back and now it doesn't seem as though I have a way to participate. I've been trying to be involved in the process going forward. And since I wasn't in on those initial conversations, it seems as though I'm now prevented from doing so, which is a little, it's sad for me that I thought I was doing the right thing and now I don't really have a voice or a seat at the table. I think the first step that we need to take is to recognize that racism exists at a systemic level, point blank. Until we firmly affirm that, we can't even begin to address the issue. I, I'm encouraging, I'm encouraged that conversations are happening in our community. However, I want to see action. There's a lot of talk, there's a lot of, you know, meetings here and there. But how do we move forward? I don't know. You know, that's not for me to say as a non-person of color. One thing that I do want to do, though, again, in keeping with the committee structure, is to form a standing committee to research and make those recommendations. And I would like to see that highly, highly made up of members of the BIPOC community. I also want to implement training, ongoing training on implicit bias so that we can better identify our own biases. We need to name it, we need to own it and we need to move forward in making decisions, being aware of those.
What's up on me there? Thank you, Tracy. So I'm going to ask one last question. So just so the audience knows, if you do have a question, please indicate you have in the chat or put your virtual hand up and I will get to whichever I see first. But I'm going to ask a final question and then we'll open up the audience members. And the final question is regarding COVID. Has the Select Board done enough to support local businesses during the COVID downturn? If no, what would you propose to do differently? I'm going to start with Tracy.
I think the schools have done a great job notifying parents when there are positive cases. I am extremely concerned about our small businesses. This is a question that's come up many times during select board meetings and it hasn't really gotten an answer. The Economic Development Commission is now finalizing work on identifying local businesses and contact information so that that outreach can just begin. I think that, you know, we should have started that a lot earlier because we do need to support our local businesses. They are the lifeblood of our community and we need to find a way to know who's hurting. What is the outstanding need? How can we help? I always go back to that question, how can I help? And with that said, my husband and I are very grateful that, you know, we've experienced no loss of income. We're able to work remotely. Our daughter is very independent in adjusting to remote schooling very easily. Our local nonprofits and food shelves need more assistance. And it's in that spirit that I'm actually committing to donating half of my select board stipend to help a local nonprofit each year to help not only with COVID but to help our local nonprofits and our community going forward.
Thank you, Tracy. And Elaine, same question to you. Has the Select Board done enough to support local businesses during the COVID downturn? If not, what would you propose to do differently?
We can absolutely do more. We have done many things so far. We reduced the tax rate back down to FY20 levels, which is effectively a reduction so that residents and businesses would have lower taxes to pay as a result of COVID. We instituted a grace period for the first time on taxes to ease the burden and we reduced the penalty for late taxes. So that was something significant that the legislature allowed us to do this year. We also took advantage of funding at the state level and applied for and received grants for economic development support for local retail businesses by offering the Out and About Programme where residents were given coupons and gift cards to spend at local businesses. And that leveraged another almost $20,000 of additional spending at these businesses over that weekend that that happened. We want to do that again. We want to make that an annual thing. So those are things we could do. I think also we are going to continue working on making sure that businesses know that we're here for them. We keep track of the unemployment rate and it seems to have gone back down, but we need to keep an eye on that. And in terms of local support for things like food shelves, you know, I worked very hard to get the Select Board to make additional financial contributions to all three food shelves that serve the community. And that happened in April. We need to look at that again. I also went out and personally fundraised $2,000 for Aunt Dot's and helped fellow board member Vince Franco. and helped fellow board member Vince Franco raise another $2,000. So like there are things that we can all be doing to assist in supporting our neighbors and businesses. And the town is absolutely open and looking for more ways to help.
Thank you so much, Elaine. Thank you so much, Tracy. That is the end of the portion where I will be asking questions. I want to open it up to the public now. As we've got a little bit of time, I'm going to allow for 90 seconds for each answer. And if anyone does have a question, please indicate that they do so. Can I ask the audience that you ask both candidates the same question? And I believe Alison, possibly Carl, Carl Wurmer, I'm not sure which one, but Carl, would you like to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. This is Carl and I, well, questions really for Tracy, though Elaine is welcome to offer an answer. And so just give you a real quick, where I come from, I moved here in 91, right by Five Corners. For a number of years, I had no idea that I was paying, you know, for two fire departments, but that half of my community was only paying for one fire department. So you identified one of the issues or the issue very well, Tracy. But you went on to point out that potentially the plan that they have has not been worked too adequately, that there are unresolved issues that are a problem. You know, having been here for a lot of years and seen a lot of back and forth on this, it's hard to judge whether that's sort of a very intentional objective assessment or at some level, one more way to delay the process. Okay, well, there are going to be things that are undecided in any process, right? There are going to be some open items that get resolved as it progresses. So if you can identify a couple of key things in a little more detail where you see it as broken if they don't take more time, rather than, okay, they won't get work anymore, we've made it work so far. That's the question.
So one area I look at is childcare. There's nothing more important to a parent than knowing that their child has reliable childcare and childcare that they can get into. At this point, the actual plan doesn't include any of the details on how that will happen. I have heard in select board meetings where it's been stated that the current village residents will keep their spots and then the remaining slots that come open will have equal availability for the town outside the village and the town inside the village. But nowhere do I see that written. I don't see any criteria or if those slots will be weighted, W E I G H T, weighted, how that will happen. And if to meet that need, will extra staff need to be hired? And if extra staff are hired, do we have the space to accommodate that? And how are all of these factors going to play into the overall cost? And is that cost going to be enough to negate the overall financial equity issues that are contained in the merger? I don't know, because that isn't spelled out. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And Elaine, would you like a cracker answering this question as well?
Sure, I'll just address the example of childcare. I said this at the last candidate forum. The charter is the backbone, is the legislation, is the thing that sets the basis of the municipality. Details like what's going to happen to childcare are not things that have to be in the charter. They shouldn't be in the charter. That's a little bit nitty gritty. The other thing is that the operation of the town departments is not the authority of the select board. We can give a direction to the unified manager as to how we'd like to see things go. But in the end, it's the manager and his department heads that have to make that happen. That said, we know that with the department head of recreation for the town and the department head of recreation for the village and the unified manager, they will work together to develop a system where everybody has fair and equal access to childcare in the community. Things like waiting lists are, and things like growing pains are the natural outgrowth of demand. And the childcare system in our community has already adjusted multiple times to increase demand. And we are confident, we trust that our employees will help us with input from the community to make a system that works fairly for everyone.
Thank you, Elaine, and thank you. Thank you, Carl, for your question. Next, I see Sabrina, Sabrina would like to ask your question. Sabrina, Sabrina M.
It looks like she put it in the chat.
Oh, excellent. Well, I'll just ask the question myself and thank you. To what extent should a select board member act as an advocate for policies they favor? And to what extent should the select board member represent the views of the public? And as Elaine answered last, last time, you can answer first, sister.
Certainly, as a select board member, I'm elected to represent the best interests of the community. And the people who vote me into office ask me to work on their behalf on what is best for the community as a whole. And so when the select board works together and comes up with a plan for something and then they vote on it positively, it's okay for us to say, this is what we think is the best path forward for the community. I feel that being able to talk about merger, for example, as a benefit for the community is absolutely acceptable. And I see it happen in communities across the country. I see the President of the United States do it. If you are an elected official and you are elected to represent the people and you are elected to do that hard work of making recommendations for what the community might need in the future, then that's our job is to do that. We are not about to say you should vote on this the way we want you to vote. That's not okay and we don't do that. But what we do do is tell them that this is the hard work we've done. This is the research we've done and this is the best path forward that we think you should think about as you're considering your vote. But in the end, the vote is entirely up to individuals.
Thank you, Elaine and Tracy. To what extent should a select board member act as an advocate for policies they favor? And to what extent should a select board member represent the views of the public?
It's my firm belief that a select board member should act as an advocate for policies that the public favors. I'm a public servant by profession, I'm a state employee. I am very versed with putting my own personal feelings on a shelf because that's where they reside. Any public official needs to carry out the will of the people they represent, period. Personal opinions need to go to the wayside. They have no say in how I would act as a select board member. I will act clearly on data and input given to me from the community. That is my personal objective.
Thank you, Tracy. And I saw Geja M. was the next person I saw with their hand up.
Yes, I do have a question. I would like to know what are the candidates' takes on current existing firearms ordinances in Essex? And do they need to change?
Tracy, as you, you answered last, last time, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, I come up from a family of hunters. I come from a family of gun owners. I am very educated in the responsible handling and storage of firearms. I firmly believe that this decision should be based not on absolute location, but on density. Because that's where the public safety criteria really comes into play. In Saxon Hill area, do I think that firearm should be used with a 25-foot buffer? Absolutely not. In my area in eight, three, where I have seven acres, do I think it's more appropriate to be sited there? I do, yes.
Thank you, Tracy, Elaine.
Some of you who are in the audience may recall the very long conversation that the community had regarding firearms ordinance, discharge ordinance. And I think we reached what was an acceptable compromise. And by that, I mean that nobody was happy with it. Some folks wanted much more restrictive rules. Some folks wanted no rules whatsoever. And it was an extremely long facilitated, difficult conversation. And I think we got to an acceptable place where people who hunt can continue to do so and people who use recreational areas can continue to do so and feel safe.
Thank you, Elaine. And I see Missy Thurston's hand up. Would like to go ahead, Missy.
Thank you, and thank you, Elaine and Tracy. My question is just, would either of you support shrinking the police by attrition like they've done in Burlington?
Elaine, would you like to go ahead?
Sure. I would not be in favor of shrinking the police force simply for the sake of shrinking, shrinking the police force. I would want to see what the job classifications of the remaining people might be. I would like to see how much we can shift public safety work strictly to the police and mental health intervention to the work of mental health experts. I don't want to make a blanket statement about reducing anything without researching exactly what the roles are of all the people in the police department. There are a lot of things that the police do that have nothing to do with being out in the public. There's a lot of work that they do behind the scenes. It's an administration, it's an operational department. And I would be hesitant to just simply cut numbers of employees simply because of the, of the need to lower the number of sworn officers.
Thank you, and Tracy, you're on, please.
Yeah, I actually agree. I think that there needs to be an underlying plan to replace supports that are currently tacked on to officers, they do so much. And as Chief Hoag has clearly shown, we, for a community of our size, we're actually understaffed. Instead of shrinking the police force, I would rather focus on building these, these, I'm sure you're familiar with the circles of support and accountability, increasing those supports to further meet the needs of our community by documenting that need. And again, how do we do that? We go back to the data. So we need to, we need to show where those needs are, what's needed, how much is needed, and then move forward with a plan to supplement the public safety, the public safety services that our current police department is meeting.
Thank you, Tracy. And I believe we have another question from Betsy Dunn. Betsy, would you like to go ahead? Let's see, I'm going to try and unmute you from where I am. But if I can't do that, would you mind popping a question in the chat? Yeah, I can't seem to unmute you, so if you wouldn't mind popping a question in the chat. In the meantime, does anyone else have a question? So yes or no? And I guess we'll go to Tracy first. Yes or no, would you support an ethics commission in Essex?
Yes, I would. I think that I firmly feel that we should not be striving to meet public meeting law, open meeting law and other ethical statutes. We should be fighting to exceed those. And how we do that is we have a commission that's focused on watching. Because we may not see what we're doing. Let me rephrase that. If we have nothing to hide, if things are being done completely above board, if things are completely out in the open, if all decisions are being made appropriately, there's no reason not to support an ethics commission. I would welcome an ethics commission to be the watchdog as far as our public process and make sure that everything is being done in the bright sunlight of transparency.
Thank you, Tracy. And Elaine, would you support an ethics commission in Essex?
Sure, absolutely. I do know that we have a conduct, a code of conduct that every board member must sign. We have a code of ethics that every board member must sign. And we have a communications policy that every board member must follow. And we also do our very best to adhere to open meeting law. And we work hard to exceed it whenever possible. And I have no problem with the concept of an ethics commission overseeing that. The public already does oversee us as a rule anyway, so that would be fine.
Thank you. Any last questions from the public?
I've got a question, can you hear me?
Yes, Irene, please go ahead.
I heard it said earlier that auxiliary mother-in-law type of apartments are welcome in Essex. And that was my impression until a friend of mine tried to do that. And he had his life's clubhouse, but he needed to add an apartment on to the side or back or wherever. And he was okay with town hall, but it was not okay with his homeowners association president. So he ended up leaving Essex. And I think that's really unfortunate. So my question is, I guess, to the candidates, what do you suggest people do when, you know, they run up against stuff like that where I would hope town hall would supersede?
I'm not sure who went last, last time, but whoever did, would they take on this question, please?
I think I went last, last time. The fact is that homeowners associations and the rules around them actually supersede town law in several respects. Another example is the chicken ordinance. You can, you can have chickens in your backyard, but if you're in an HOA that doesn't allow it, then you can't. So in the case of that unfortunate person, it's too bad that they weren't able to stay in Essex. Talking to the planning commission, perhaps looking for a zoning board of authority, waiver of some kind, working with the town, there are definitely ways to solve problems of that nature. But there are definitely also rules that have to be followed. And so it may be more frustrating to, and frankly, probably involve more bureaucracy, which nobody wants to deal with, but is a fact of life. I wish that person had been able to work it out with the planning commission and the town.
First, you'd like to take a crack at this.
Yeah, having lived in a condo association for 14 years before this and actually serving as the president of that homeowners association, there is little that can be done to supersede that. I look at it as even federal law. The FCC says that you can't, you can't restrict, or excuse me, you can't prevent, you can't have laws in your homeowners association that basically say you cannot have satellite dishes. But a homeowners association has the authority to govern where they can be placed. So another example of, you know, federal law says one thing, but yet a homeowners association has the absolute right to dictate how that happens, how the implementation of that happens. So I guess I would just encourage folks to have conversations with the select board, with the planning commission, with the ZBA. If merger passes, the DRB, the Development Review Board, in order to try and collaborate and come up with a solution that works for everyone.
Well, thank you, Tracy, and thank you, Elaine, for those questions. And thank you to both of you for being part of this forum this evening. And also a big thank you for everyone who participated and asked questions. That's about all we've got time for. I really do appreciate everyone being here. Just to let you know, we have recorded this and we will be putting up on the Rad Facebook page probably in the next couple of days. But I wish both candidates the best of luck.
Thank you, Tom, for having this, for having this opportunity, very appreciative.
No worries. Thank you, honestly, thank you for being here. As I said, I wish you the best of luck. Town meeting day is only two weeks away. I know I am counting down the days, so I'm sure you too are definitely doing that as well. Yeah, well, have a good evening, everyone, and be safe in the storm.
Absolutely, Tom, thank you for the opportunity.
Good night.